Call to order at 6:04 PM. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Olivia Valentine to do the invocation today, and we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Katrina Manning. Councilwoman-elect.
May we bow our heads. Thank you, Almighty God, for bringing us to this season of Thanksgiving and preparing for Christmas. Thank you once again for taking care of our families through this pandemic and for keeping our city strong and giving us the resources in order to do the people's work and provide for the needs of our residents. May this city continue to grow in grace and in resources, and may you continue to bless this city as we move along further into the 21st century. Amen.
Amen.
Hand over your left. Your heart. Ready? I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Rice English. Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Patterson. Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our first item tonight is a presentation. Councilmember Montero, please proceed. Recognizing Employee Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask Ms. Debbie Santos to the podium, please? As some of you know that Ms. Santos is going to retire towards the end of December. Since on December 13th, we're going to have a lot of stuff happening, so I just wanted to make sure that we highlight all her accomplishments she have done. So, a proclamation honored to Debbie C. Santos. Here as for the 21 years Ms. Debo Santos came to the City of Hawthorne, where she made her skill, background, and knowledge an asset to the community and the city employees. And Ms. Santos implemented new systems of the city, Prime Gov, helping to broadcast council and planning meetings in high definition onto YouTube and online, saving the city's significant cost of previous vendors. And her main function was with the cable department, but she also assisted with the city clerk's office by using Prime Gov to create agendas, become digital, and satellite online. She also ensured that agenda would distribute in a timely manner and save on print jobs making for the last of carbon footprint being left to the planet. And Ms. Debbie Santos was also the HMEA, the Hawthorne Municipal Employees Association Board Member and President from 2020 through 2022, assisting employees with both communication and to reorganization by Debbie. Using her extensive knowledge of employee relation, she managed to put the HMEA through difficult times and reorganized the urgent necessity to assist employee in the needs. And Debbie helped lead the cable TV to many awards through the time of HGTV, doing ADI script consulting, managing shoots, and supervising through her career. Hawthorne and the city does formally recognize and take great pride in acknowledging Ms. Debbie Santos for your great achievement, community contribution, dedication, and the commitment to the City of Hawthorne. Wish you the best in your future endeavor and embark on your retirement journey. Proclaim this date, 29th date of November 2022. So, my colleagues, let's go.
Wow.
Well, I wanted to read that because, you know, it's been, you know, almost two decades and plus. So, and I know Debbie for a long time. And like I said, you know, she have done a lot for the City of Hawthorne, so I didn't want her to go without being recognized for outstanding leadership. She officially, she showed with HMEA because I did interview with her a couple times. So, thank you very much because you deserve all the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie, for your contributions to our great city, and we really appreciate your service. I know the times that I have met with you, I have always felt that you were very effective in what you were doing and very, very much concerned with the benefit of the employees. And I really appreciate your service for that. So, thank you for your service to the city.
To the chair. Thank you. Debbie, can I just say, when I grow up, can I be just like you? I mean, truly, the accomplishments that were just read off today were truly amazing, and we thank you and can't say enough for your dedication to the city. I mean, just from the Prime Gov alone, that was just probably the most, you know, difficult thing to do because there's so much, you know, changing legislation and just trying to be up on the most current affairs to your YouTube and everything that you've done in the city clerk's office, especially during those times that we really needed help in the city clerk's office. I know we fell behind some, but you did help us and bring us back. So, thank you for that. Wish you well in your retirement. May you do something to celebrate you and have fun, whatever it may be. And I could only hope to do exactly what you're going to be doing in your retirement, which is absolutely nothing. But thank you so much. We truly appreciate all the efforts that you've made here and your dedication to the city. Appreciate it.
Through the chair. Also, just want to appreciate your commitment to the city and your hard work and your contribution. It shows up. You know, a lot of staff members do a lot with very little support, and definitely we can say that that's true about you. And so, we appreciate your contribution to our city.
Thank you.
Also want to chime in and thank you as well. You've, there's been some points in our last history, 10 or 15 years worth of history, where we say, hey, we need to be coming up to speed compared to all these other cities when it comes to the social media, when it comes to our cable presentations. And you've always been there consistently putting together our latest packages to be able to let the people know what's going on in the city. So, you've taken us to a different level, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, oral communications, please.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, the public should directly address the legislative body concerning items that have been described in the special meeting agenda.
There aren't any cards. If anybody will speak, I need them to line up right now, please, so we can get a count. Go ahead.
Good evening. Ruben with the North Hawthorne Community Association. I'm here basically to clarify a few things that were said by in the last meeting in regards of the whole cannabis situation. I know that it was put on the people that said that the people didn't come out and go against it and so on. And that's a complete, another lie for the same reason you received petitions for over 200 signatures. This was back in July. I know North Hawthorne submitted paperwork as well. But besides that, I also wanted to kind of clarify a few things as well when it comes to this whole charter city. I want to let everyone know, especially everybody on TV, that this whole charter city, yes, it was a great idea to put on the ballot. That's for sure. But what caught our attention was the whole 75,000 salary. Yeah, that's true. But there was a reason for that. There's a reason, and the reason was, and it's only common sense. It was a smokescreen. It was a smokescreen so everyone could be fighting and arguing amongst each other amongst the residents. It's about the salaries, talking about social media. People ran on platforms with this. It was a smokescreen because the real initiative, the real reason these five were planning is to put the whole cannabis vote on the 8th. Why on the 8th? Because everyone during this whole past, what, few months, they were fighting for this charter city. So, please, understand, you have to really read between the lines. The cannabis measure should have been next to the charter city. As you know, there are three cities surrounding us in the South Bay that they did implement a measure, which they rejected cannabis. Our standards now have lowered. Our children are in danger. We have people with emotions. I understand that marijuana and sub-substance, it helps and health-wise and all that. But reality is, there's a lot of corruption behind it, a lot of cartels, a lot of these gummies, a lot of these gummies that hurt our children. I am very sad and ashamed that our school board members, none of them came up to the board and start talking and talking to everyone how they feel about it. Because in person, when I spoke to Choppie, she was, oh, I'm against it, I'm against it, I'm against it. Yeah, where was she hearing to talk about it? And this is what I'm talking about. Everyone is intermixed with something, and cannabis is going to bring them together. And all of you residents out at home, wherever the camera is, you need to be looking at this because this was a united front that they used the charter city for a smokescreen and the salary for a smokescreen so this cannabis thing could move forward. I want that to be clear. I want everyone to understand that, North Hawthorne, we're not activists. We hold people to account. We look at what's going on. We kind of step outside and we use common sense. And that's what we bring. We bring common sense to this. Obviously, there's a lot of people that get upset. But that's, you know, we can sit down and talk about it. That's not a problem. The only thing is that we need to make it clear that this whole cannabis, you know, had lower, is going to lower our property values. You have lowered the standards for our schools, especially in our schools. You know, and especially when you talk about bringing in, oh, we talked hand-in-hand with the Hawthorne Police Department. That's a complete lie. Only one police officer, I believe he's like from the IT. All right? All right? No one has talked to narcotics. No one has done anything like that. You guys did not do your homework like you're supposed to. But yet, you told everybody, you have said to everyone right in front of our faces that everything was in compliance. You lied to us. You completely lied to us. We're ashamed of what happened. And I'm speaking about the five. You know, great job by our city attorney. Great job by our city manager. You know, but right now, it's very shameful. I'm very disappointed in all five of you. You know, and so is North Hawthorne. That's why from here on, North Hawthorne, yeah, we're going to be keeping a close eye on all of you and whomever you're going to bring in or talk to or hang out with. Because that needs to be done. We have to hold you to account, all of you, and whoever's coming on board as well. It's shameful, and I'm saying, this charter city, it was just a smokescreen. So, all of you that complained to me and talking about, hey, what's your side on the charter city salaries? It's the same thing I told them. I'm saying, it's great to be on the ballot. But you have to remember, they're hiding something, and that's the cannabis. And on the 8th, they showed it. In the united front, they all voted for this on the 8th. So, all of you, have a good night. God bless. God bless the City of Hawthorne.
Okay, I don't see anybody else lining up. I'll declare oral communications closed, ordered. So, just remember, guys, when I ask you guys to line up, it's because we're trying to get an idea of how many people are going to speak. Okay? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have three items on the consent calendar. They are Items 2 through 4 for your consideration and approval. Item 2, approval of waiver of full ratings or resolutions and/or ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item 3, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for November 8th, 2022. Item 4, Resolution Number 8385, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, approving applications for specified grant funds for adoption.
Move to approve.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
We'd like to welcome our treasurer-elect and our city clerk-elect who are in the audience. And our councilwoman-elect. And now, you see what you have to look forward to, councilwoman-elect. All right. So, we covered the, okay, so I think you present the other next items, please.
Item 5, now is the time and place for a public hearing to adopt Resolution Number 8384, establishing fees related to the commercial cannabis business. No written communications were received.
Is there anybody who would like to speak on this topic in particular?
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff, and neighbors.
Just a moment, please.
For a public hearing, you, there's no time.
Is that true?
Public hearing doesn't need time?
Is there a time, is public hearing time? I'm sorry, ma'am, it's not that we're just, it's just a... Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay, just a quick comment. I was here during the last meeting when there was a lot of discussion about this issue. And there was a lot of back and forth with the people in the dais about the fact that the citizens had voted to allow these taxes, et cetera, et cetera, and that there were a lot of public meetings. And the only thing that I want to say about that is that when the original vote was taken a few years ago asking us if we wanted to impose taxes if this were ever to come to pass, that whole campaign was marketed to the citizens as being our city's way to keep cannabis out of here. And then, the public meetings that were held, where these were being discussed, were held during the time that COVID was going on, and none of us in the citizenry could get to City Hall. Meetings were held online. And I really feel like we had a bait and switch going on here and that this was done without the input of the citizens who had made their feelings very, very clear that they did not want cannabis for sale in this city. I'm not expressing my own opinion about whether I think cannabis should or should not be here, but I do have very much a problem with the way that this was put forth to the citizenry. I think it was done essentially behind closed doors and with a bait and switch tactic to it, and I'm very disappointed about that. Thank you.
She missed my spell a little earlier, what I said. In regards of the baiting switch, I just kind of reiterated the whole charter city was a smokescreen in order for them to vote on the 8th about the cannabis. That's why, as she referred to the citizens coming to the podium and on petitions. Yeah, you guys could look all the way to the ground and all that, but we know what you guys are about now. I'll make it nice and short because I don't know, is this going to be inputted into data? Because I don't know if even our official letters in the data in regards of this whole matter, where we brought up the issues in regards of the whole revision of the ballot prior to the voting on the tax. On how the tax is where the corruption lies. The tax is where they reduce it later on. They don't need public, they don't need to tell you that they're going to reduce the tax in the future. They can do that by themselves, kind of like what they did on the 8th. You know, the only way that they can put the whole tax issue for them to raise it is for them to put it on the ballot. And obviously, they're going to be, the cannabis people are going to be complaining about not making money. Like I said, Gavin Newsom already brought this and has talked about it. And this was exactly what happened in Colorado. That's where all the corruption comes about. And it's, and once again, like I said, you know, now I understand why everybody was concerned and worried about safety and security, having, what do you call, metal detectors and all that. Because you know you're going to have angry parents. You're going to have angry parents when their kids are sick, when they get OD'd because of these gummies that they have out there. Did you guys even talk about that? Of course not. But they're going to sell it in these shops? Yes, they are. If you would have talked to narcotics units from our city, you would have known. But you didn't. You guys decided to talk to the IT guy. But yet, you painted the whole Hawthorne PD with a broad brush. You know, why wouldn't you talk to the narcotics unit? No. Why didn't you listen to the people? You didn't. You even had people from St. Joseph to talk here. And what do you say? You guys threw that aside. And then, to be said at the last meeting that everyone's input and nobody really came to the meetings. How are they going to go to these town hall meetings when they wanted vaccination cards, they wanted masks, they wanted all sorts of things? You know, they wanted, oh, they wanted to put, what, tickets and so on? Like it was some kind of live event? Once again, everything was done united, in a united front with this. It's very shameful. And like I said, you've lowered the standards of our city and the cities surrounding us that voted against it. Their cities are going to strive. They listen to their residents. The only thing I could really say that is going to, I think everybody's going to bring a smile to everybody's faces. You have to remember one thing. If you're messing with the kids, with children, because that's what this goes about. This goes to the kids at the end. You know, one thing is for sure. You guys are low-hanging fruit. You guys can't compare yourselves to these other cities. Guess who the feds come after? They come towards the low-hanging fruit. Sooner or later, if it's not happening now, you know, you guys are already being investigated. I wouldn't doubt it because that's the way this works. You guys are low-hanging fruit for them. You know? This is what you guys have to be looking at. And that's the only thing that I say and tell the people who are watching that sooner or later, unfortunately, you know, our city in the future is going to look bad again. Not only because we passed this, but because we're going to have more legal issues with our council members or whoever been involved in all this stuff. And I'm sure, you got, you know, that's the way, that's the way, I was, the universe. I don't like to say karma. I like to say the universe works. You bring something that's going to intoxicate our kids, our children, and lower the value of our homes, of our properties, of our community. You know, that's what happens. The universe works that way. You know? Ni más rico, ni más pobre. That's what my grandma used to say. You know? And that's the way it is. So, whatever, if it was worth it to you, not for long. I could assure you that because that's the way the universe works, you guys. Take care, God bless again. Have a good night.
Anyone else? Is that it? Public comment on the public hearing is closed, ordered. Can you read the resolution, please?
Resolution 8384, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, establishing fees related to the commercial cannabis business and adopting a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act for adoption.
Any comment? Or just, I'm sorry, if you guys could make a motion or whatever.
I'll move.
Second. Quick comment here. Okay.
Well, okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I got a comment. I have a comment.
Oh, you have a comment, okay. Go ahead.
Is there something you feel the surgery?
I was going to ask the consultant to explain, you know, the fees a little bit.
All right, okay, yeah, I think that'll be good before I make my comments.
Before I vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Once again, I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson with EJMA Planning and Development. We didn't have a full presentation today since it's just a fee schedule, but I can take any questions that you have. Just giving you an overview of what this is. This isn't the tax that was already established by the tax measure. These are application fees for processing the application. And also, we have a new application fee for conditional use permits for the planning department. And it's related to cannabis. As you know, the ordinance requires a conditional use permit for all retail facilities. So, there has to be a processing fee. And these fees cover all of the city's costs for processing these applications and including the environmental documents that are necessary for them.
So, when you talk about, for example, the non-refundal fee for $12,302, why didn't make it a round number instead, let's say, $14,000 or $15,000 instead of that $12,302 specifically?
Because we did it based on time spent. And so, and we took the city's time and our consulting fees' time, and that's the exact number. And because under the government code, the city cannot accept fees over the amount of the amount that it would cost to do the service, we made it the exact amount.
So, you base that amount, right, on the... So, so you base that amount, right, on, on the anticipation that we will receive maybe about thirty applicants?
So we made that fee based on the amount of time and materials going in to process each of those individual applications, including the time the city has already spent on workshops. We had our, remember, we had our, our bi-weekly meetings, our town halls, all of the fees that have already been incurred by the city. So reimbursing those fees, because we are a full cost recovery program, we have to reimburse the city for those fees as well as the fees moving forward for processing. So that number is a combination of those two things. So yes, if we get, our, our model is thirty applications or thirty applications for uses, because that fee is per use. So if we get thirty used applications, that would, that will put us in the gr- or, um, we will be, we'll break even on the fees that have already been incurred by the city. And then also, it will cover all of the costs needed moving forward for processing and intake.
So thank you for that. So just to clarify for the public out there, because there were some comments on the, on the social media that we were going to have thirty dispensary. So
No.
Explain that to the people.
Okay, so the ordinance only allows six retail locations. So we cannot have more than six, and we will never have more than six without an ordinance amendment. So the cap is six, and that we could have less than six, but we can't have more than six. The thirty is just about the number of applications, and it's just a model that we used, a formula that we use to come up with a reasonable fee to cover the costs of the city. So all of it, none of this is income generating for the city. None of this is going to be a situation where you are, you know, trying to earn money, like through this process. All of these fees will go back to staff costs.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Yeah, go ahead.
To the chair. Thank you, Mayor. So, Ms. Ebony, there's a projected thirty, right? However, it could go up or it could go down?
Correct.
Okay. So this is just an estimate?
These are estimates, and we had to use some formula, so thirty seemed reasonable considering we have six retail that will allow up to three uses each. So that will put us at least at eighteen. And then we have the other uses, and based on the amount of availability, we, we use some modeling for that. So all of this is modeled out, and it is all to recoup the costs. So if we have more than thirty, we're going to have more fees for processing. So that, that, those fees will go, or those, uh, application fees would go towards those processing fees.
And so to go further in just the processing of applicants, there's going to be a time set that we're going to have a discussion about, and it's going to open up a timeline. Once it's open, and then it closes, it's closed. We're not accepting any others. Just to be correct. And then based off of what license scene they are looking for or applying for, right?
Correct.
There's a fee for each of those licenses that are going to be eventually submitted for.
Yes, correct.
It's not a guarantee that any of those applicants submitting would get everything that they're asking for, let alone their money back. But having said that, there's going to be a vetting process. There's going to be a background check through police. So all the naysayers, all the scare tactics and everything that is floating about, just to be correct, and so the folks at home can also understand too, because there's always two sides to the story, that we are assuring not only a good cannabis program, but we're assuring that the community is aware on the efforts that we've made to secure, right? And to assure that everything is being followed to the T.
Correct. And so part of that application process is we're asking very specific questions about compliance with state law. One of those things, of course, we will be asking for packaging, what, basically testing these applicants' knowledge. So we should, the state actually just released new, more, more restrictive regulations, especially around packaging and cartoons, things, anything that would look like you're marketing to children. The state is very, very strict on that. So we will be looking at these operators. The, the panel will be, the evaluation panel will be looking at these operators comprehensively, not just if they're financially sound, but are they financially sound? Do they understand the industry? Do they understand the regulations? All of those things will be reviewed by our panel, which is made up of city staff and the police department. And so the process, just so we can, like, walk through that, it's a thirty-day application process. Before we open that thirty-day window, we will post online the entire timeline. So when we will take applications, there will be a reservation system, so applicants can make an appointment to submit their applications. They can also do walk-in. So it, it'll be very accommodating to everyone with different needs. We have a whole process that we worked through, through our working group, on how this will, will happen. But everything will be handled internally through the city and city staff with, in, in regards to collecting those fees that we're, we're talking about. They'll go through the city finance department. All of those things will be happening here in City Hall. So we have an entire timeline for thirty days for that. In the middle of that, we will also have a perspector operator's workshop, where all of the prospective operators can come and ask questions. They'll get those answers, you know, as they may relate to the application itself or the ordinance. We'll clarify all of that. We're going to put that online as well, so that it's, again, fully transparent and everyone has access to the same information. So that will be the process within those thirty days. We'll just be doing intake. After that, the, the completed applications, meaning that they are complete, they have all of their information submitted, those will go on to our panel for review and for scoring. So it's, it's going to be, in that regard, it's a two-part process. Those applicants that are selected for retail licenses have to go through another process, which is our conditional use process, which would be the same as any other kind of development application of this nature in the city. So that would happen, go through the full planning commission hearing. You're going to have to submit all of your, your new documents for your conditional use permit, including a site plan and all of those things, elevations. And they'll go to our planning commission for initial approval. So that is, that's the process that we're looking at, and that's what these fees capture.
Right. And the conditional use permit, or I should say, processing fee for a conditional permit is thirty-one thousand five hundred and four dollars?
Yes.
So I say that so that folks could understand too how serious the process is in inquiring such an endeavor. Because if you're not even licensed with the state of California, correct? You have no business in line, let alone submitting an application to the City of Hawthorne for a potential, correct?
Well, the, the city process goes first. So we would get the city process, but based on our application and the ordinance that we, you all have approved and we've designed, it is, it is merit-based. So we are looking at applicants that do have some feet on the ground in the industry. So if they don't have, they're not going to have a license for Hawthorne yet for this, from the state, but they might have one from another city, from LA or from another state even. So they have some industry experience already.
Yes.
So we are looking for more merit-based applications, and you're likely going to get those. But the state won't issue the final approval for the, for their license until the city issues their final. And part of that is SEQA. So we do have to go through the SEQA process. So that, that price tax seems a little bit hefty, but from a normal, maybe CUP, it's about, maybe about, I think about maybe fifteen percent higher. But that reason is because there are a lot of approvals and a lot of boxes we have to check to meet the state requirements now. So we want to make sure that we have captured all that staff time. We did do a fee model, and we did get the fees from the city staff on how long it's going to take, you know, from the planning department and engineers and all of the things that we need to create maps and all sorts of things. So that's, that's how we got to that price. So it is, it is very much well calculated, and that's why it's like almost down to the penny.
Right. And, and I know that we've been updating really quick. I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm going to wrap it up. I know that we've been working very hard on our city website to assure that we have, you know, disclosures, that we have non-refundables, we have just, you know, general information, you know, I, I hate to say it, but, you know, there's always going to be someone coming back. I didn't know, I didn't see this, I didn't read that, I didn't do this, that, that. So we just want to make sure that we're very clear on the verbiage, the language, anything that needs to be included. And if there is, if there are amendments that are going to be made, obviously that would happen. And as soon as those are made, that the updates be made at the website as well, so.
Absolutely. And we, you'll start seeing some new updates on the website regarding the process, the timeline, the fees. Once they're adopted, all of that will be on the website. And then, once the window opens, the applicants will be able to download an information packet with everything in it, a copy of the ordinance, all the forms that are necessary, all the attestations will be available. So everything will be available on the website.
Thank you so much.
All right, folks, please vote.
Was there a second? I'm sorry. I made a motion.
There was a second.
Okay.
It was, it was, uh, you made the motion and
A second.
Okay.
Mayor Protiem seconded.
Thank you.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay, next item, go ahead. City manager's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, the agenda reflects you have items six through fourteen on the city manager's consent calendar. Go ahead and please read these for the city, go ahead and please read these for the city manager.
Item six, City of Hawthorne's investment report for the quarter ended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Item seven, award of contract for street tree trimming project, project number twenty-two dash zero seven. Item eight, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the Department of Transportation to conduct a free dump day event. Item nine, progress payment number five in the amount of six hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and one dollars and forty-two cents due to Sequel Contractors, Inc. of Santa Fe Springs, Calif- California for local street improvement project twenty-twenty-two, project number twenty-two zero four. Approval of, item ten, approval of purchase of stump cutter. Item eleven, partnership agreement between Los Angeles County, County, City of El Segundo, City of Londo, City of Manhattan Beach and City of Redondo Beach for a land park multi-benefit stormwater capture project and appropriation of one million dollars from the Measure W Fund for this project. Item twelve, progress payment number two in the amount of six hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and fourteen cents due to Martinez Landscape Company, Inc. of Silmar, California for general maintenance, project number twenty-two dash zero five. Item thirteen, change of start date. Item fourteen, review of the quarter one financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city manager's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve items six through fourteen?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved by myself, seconded by Councilwoman Angie Reyes English. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
City attorney's consent calendar. Madam Clerk, can you go ahead and please read this for the city attorney?
Item fifteen, deny claim of Beverly Bergeron. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar. May I have a motion to approve item fifteen?
I move.
Second.
I'll give it to you.
Well, okay, uh, go ahead, Mayor Protiem. What was it, between you guys? Okay, councilmember Montero. Please vote.
Sorry.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Valentine, you have item sixteen. Go ahead, Ms., ma'am.
So if you, if you turn to number sixteen in your, in the agenda, there's a letter, there is a, a proposal, and then also there is a letter there from the South Bay Council of Governments. So I am concerned, along with the South Bay Council of Governments, that the county's proposal to establish a land bank pilot program could undermine local land use and zoning regulations and exempt property taxes while the county holds land for future use. This is being developed so far by the county without input from any of our eighty-eight local incorporated cities. It negates the city's general plans and usurps local authority over land use decisions. It would also cripple city's ability to implement their prepared plans and threaten their future funding for local services, as well as deprive cities of critical property tax income to fund city services. The state has already passed SB nine, A bill eleven, and SB six, which were promoted as bills which would increase the supply and affordability of housing. These laws already usurp local authority, but the fact that they are on the books make the creation of a county-wide land bank program unnecessary. So if you, I'm, hopefully you took a look at the letter that was sent by the South Bay COG. The League of California Cities expressed early opposition to the county's proposal on October tenth, twenty twenty-two. The COG's letter dated November sixth is in the agenda packet. I am asking the council to send a letter from the City of Hawthorne to the Chair of the Board of Supervisors in support of the letter sent by the South Bay COG opposing the LA County Land Bank Program. That's the motion.
To the chair. So in, in reading the summary of, of this land bank program and looking at the letter, you know, I will say that, conceptually, I'm not against the idea, but what I'm not a fan of is depriving us of tax dollars for developing land, potentially developing land within our, within our city. So I mean, I, I think overall, you know, the big picture is not a, a bad concept to develop along, you know, the, the riverbank and the, and the rail system and provide affordable housing. But I, I don't, would like for it not to be at, at the expense of our, our revenue. So for that reason, you know, I would support a letter supporting the COG's position against it. At least a letter asking for some amendments to the program, not necessarily expressing, you know, a, a disinterest in the program altogether.
Okay, I'll join in support too. We have three so far. Go ahead.
Yeah, you got, got my blessing, because I was at the meeting when they explained to us, so I understood. So the, the county actually was going to vote on this, and then they tabled because of the South Bay COG letter. So now we got, we're getting more support, so, so they can actually, if they're going to do anything, they have to come back and put all the cities to be involved in discussing how we should do this or we should not do this.
That was the problem. They never involve the cities.
They not involve us. They involve no cities, no COGS, nothing.
Like the state does.
Okay, so I support.
Number four. Want to take a position?
Can I say something?
Take your position. Go ahead.
So, you know, what's the, uh, no take no action? I'm, I'm just curious. The reason I'm saying this is because it says that implement, implementation of the land bank pilot, it's a pilot project, should only apply to unincorporated areas.
No, it, it applies to unincorporate, it didn't, it applies to the unincorporated and the incorporated areas.
I'm reading the South Bay City COG letter, and it says if the county moves forward with the implementation of the land bank pilot, which is a pilot program, and it was through use of, uh, the rescue plan dollars of fifty million to develop affordable housing along the LA River Bank. It also mentioned that it should only apply to unincorporated areas and should be voluntary for unincorporated cities. So the reason I say to take no action, but, you know, here, here again, if it doesn't apply to us, it's the unincorporated areas.
It does apply to us. It applies to all the cities.
But it was a suggestion. See, the South Bay COG, after the county was going to vote to go across the board all the LA County. So then, the COG suggests if you're going to do this without our consultation, without, you know, without bringing us to the table, then you should do it just on the non-incorporated areas of your county, not, not say Hawthorne have to apply by this.
Well, and that's, and that's what the letter is basically saying. So that's a come, I, I, I know that everyone was briefed. I, I wasn't briefed, however, it's my understanding from the letter that it's for the unincorporated areas. However, it should be voluntary for the incorporated cities, which would be us, right?
And that's what, that's what the letter is asking for.
Yeah.
So that's not what the current language is saying. This is what the letter is asking for. So the question is, do we want to support what the letter says?
So basically just telling LA County, no?
Oh, tell them to make
This is not what we want with, with regards to development of, of additional affordable housing?
Well, tell them to make the suggestions that are outlined in this letter.
I know, but it's basically saying that, no, we're not for development of affordable housing. housing.
No.
It's, it's not-
Well, it's not, it's basically saying-
One at a time, guys. Go ahead.
It's basically saying, if you want to do this, you need to get the input of the cities. That this is not, this should not be a unilateral decision by the county to take our land. You should, you should include us in the decision. It should be our decision, as far, as far as the incorporated cities are concerned, we should decide too. We should be in the mix. And, and you can do it as far as the unincorporated areas without any input from anyone. But for the cities, you should get our input. That's basically what we want.
No, I understand that. Again, this is, this is a debate, right? This is a discussion that we're having. Your understanding is different from what I'm seeing, right? So I'm asking a broad question here. Are we against affordable housing? Because they're using fifty million of recovery, the American Rescue Plan dollars for that purpose. It doesn't matter whether it's unincorporated, inincorporated, whatever it is. The whole idea is to develop affordable housing with the fifty million. So my question is, in spite of what it is we're trying to do here, either support or be against or whatever, the issue at hand is, are we then saying we're not for affordable housing?
To the Chair. I'll defer to the author, the lead on this.
Well, we're not saying we're not for affordable housing. We certainly are for affordable housing. We are not for the county taking unilateral action to take our land without our input in order to build affordable housing. If they want to build affordable housing, we may decide to cooperate with them. We may give them some, we may voluntarily give them some land.
Which, which land is that in our city? What land do we have to give them?
I don't know. I'm just saying, they're, they're going to take it anyway. In other words, it's eminent domain on their part. They're not going to ask us what land, they'll take what land they want to take.
If they want to take land, have them take the mall land. They could take the mall land and develop all that all day long. But again, I, I, I'm for affordable housing, right?
I think we all are for that.
Yeah, but if we're saying, if we're sending this land, I, I'm going to abstain, okay? Because it says you could do one of, of two things. Either tell the LA County Supervisors, no, we're not for you not bringing us to the table, or two, don't take action. But, but again, like I said, I'm not going to take any action because I'm for affordable housing, and they're not taking our land. It's in, in incorporated. It's LA County, it's LA County, it's LA County, it's not-
All right, guys, I think we have an-
I think there's a basic misunderstanding.
Yeah, there is, yeah, there is a misunderstanding. The reason that I, I'm, I'm trying to explain, because I, myself and Ms. Valentine were on, we went to the meeting and when they were talking about this. The problem is, the county was going to vote to take land from any city in LA County to develop affordable housing. Of course, we are, we, we want affordable housing, but if they're going to come and say, okay, we're going to take City Hall and turn into the, into affordable housing, without us making decisions to say, yes, go ahead and do it. So what, what the cog is saying is, look, we are in favor of affordable housing, but we want to be on the table to discuss all the logistics before you decide you're going to take land from Hawthorne, land from Inglewood, or land from Manhattan Beach. Come and talk, let's sit down and create the plan before you vote on this pilot project. Or if you want to do it by yourself, by the county, by those five ladies sitting on the Board of Supervisors, if you want to do it, then just do it on your no, on your non-incorporated areas of, of, of LA County, that we have Del Air, we have some part of the Crenshaw and one thirty-fifth, Boja Park. So they can come, if, if they decide to say, okay, we're going, we want to go by ourselves, so we're going to do it in our non-incorporated area, then they take lands by eminent domain, like for example, they can take the park in Boja Park and turn that into affordable housing. They can come right here in La Zanica, build affordable housing. They can go on one thirty-fifth before Crenshaw, build affordable housing without the city input. That is what the cog is saying. If you want to do that, go ahead. But if you want to take some other land, like the mall, for example, right, then come talk to the city, but we have to have a plan how to do it. So, but the county was just going to do a lottery, just say, okay, we're going to take land, we're going to do affordable housing, without your consent or not.
All right, guys, I make a motion. Everybody stated their position. I make a motion.
Second.
Please vote accordingly.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes, with Councilmember Reyes English upstanding.
I guess with, with the state trying to tell us what to do, or, you know, supersede our municipal authority, and now the county want to do that, I don't think there'll be any purpose for any of us up here.
Exactly, exactly.
We retire.
Didn't you say you were going to go off to like a vacation home or something? I won't find-
Exactly, yeah, I'm ready.
You can still do that. All right. Well, at some point, it seems like it's going to shoot, man.
It's going to be end up on court anyway.
Elected officials reports. Anything from the city clerk's office? I know they're not here, but is there anything, communication from them? When do we get those certified results?
It's scheduled for December eighth.
Okay, thank you. I'll give the floor to Councilwoman Valentine.
All right, thank you. On November eight, this is, the first one is on the, my, my trip to the Bay Delta area on water inspection. On November eighteenth and nineteenth, I took the State Water Project Inspection Tour with the Metropolitan Water District and West Basin Water Director Harold Williams in the Bay Delta area north of Sacramento. This is a very instructive tour, wherein you get to listen to lectures from experts on the history of how Southern California has obtained its water and what is done to preserve the supply. The importance of the Delta is that it supplies drinking water to the state and the water supply for our vast agriculture system, which feeds forty-five percent of the country, of the, yes, of the country. We saw the result of a hundred years of building farms in this area and building levees, which has directed water away from the farms to prevent flooding. This very complex system has been taxed with having to protect the fish and wildlife in the area, support the farm system, and also provide drinking water. We also learned that the Delta is not sustainable in its current form. For Southern California, the challenge is that there are periods of severe intrusion of ocean water into the Delta. The ground level is subsiding because of the building of levees. The levees are old and eroding and in need of infrastructure funding. If there is a severe enough earthquake and the levees break, there is real danger that our drinking water will become salty. Our water agencies, Metropolitan and West Basin, contract with the State Water Project to bring water from the Delta as a part of Southern California's water supply. There has been a real push from them for years to build an underground water conveyance around the Delta. This would separate the ecosystem from the water supply and direct only pure water coming to Southern California. It started as a project to build two tunnels. It was heavily supported by Governor Jerry Brown and was cut back to one tunnel by Governor Newsom. There has also been political pushback from the farmers up north for years to stop the tunnels. There is a current study being done, and it is once again in the spotlight because our water agencies consider it urgent that we act. There is a comment period that ends on December sixteenth. The comment place to go is M W D H two O dot com, just H two O water, M W D H two O dot com. I'm directing staff to review the D E I R, the Draft Environmental Impact Report, and provide comment during the comment period, which ends again December sixteenth. I'm also directing staff to write, invite a speaker from West Basin to make a presentation on the challenges faced by the, faced by the water agencies concerning the Delta and how the Delta Conveyance Tunnel could make a difference in the reliability of the water And the second thing I want to talk about is the VFW Thanksgiving Luncheon. Thank you to the organizers of the VFW Annual Thanksgiving Luncheon, which was held on Sunday, November twentieth, to honor the disabled veterans of the region. There were veterans represented from all of the services and from most of the wars this nation has fought. It was a great chance for all of us to thank the veterans for their service around good food and good socializing. I want to acknowledge the efforts to do so by the local service organizations, the VFW and the American Legion. Thank you so much. It was a great enjoyable afternoon. And that's all I have.
Mr. Montero.
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Again, thank you for the public to come today. It was a special meeting, so thank you for coming to voice your opinion. Like I said, you know, it's good to hear from you, but sometimes it's good to get the facts straight. So thank you for your, to raise your concern. I want to say thank you again, you know, the, the, yes, the VFW and the American Legion, these are outstanding job on November twentieth, where Ms. Valentine and I attend, and, and the, the city gave them a certificate of appreciation for their, you know, many years and decades of service to the disabled veterans. So it was very good. The Hawthorne Land and Mistair Association also did the single lunch on November seventeen. It was about, maybe about three hundred people show up for lunch. So thank you for all of those who volunteered for the Hawthorne Mistair Association and for all the, even Mr. Muhammad Walah was there serving, so thank you for their service. Also, the, it was Operation Gobble with Ms. English. So the, thank you to the, all the donations that we received, especially from the Cal Water, that were able to give gift card to, to a lot of, about maybe two hundred families. And also, I want to say thank you to all of those organizations who donated to the Hawthorne President's Council, because on the twenty-first, I gave up two hundred Christmas and Thanksgiving baskets with three thousand dollar gift card to many families. Thanks to Chevron, South Bay Ford, South Bay Whip, Women's Club, et cetera, et cetera. So thank you for all the donation. Also, I want to thank Pastor Jefferson, because he also donated about thirty turkeys to the two hundred families. So those who didn't want turkeys, they took chicken and gift card to go buy their own meat. So thank you for all. I hope everybody had a good Thanksgiving, and so December is coming. So we look forward for Christmas. And I want to give one directive, Mr. Mayor, because, to help us out, because I'm already getting a schedule for next year, council committee assignments, and all those board meetings that we have to go to different, different committee, different teams. Also, Ms. Valentine is leaving, so we need to come up with the, who is going to be attending meetings on the depth, on the committee, to present the city in different organization that represent the county. So if I can ask our attorney, Robert King, to bring that list, so we can assign people for the committee, because they already scheduling meeting for two thousand and twenty-three. So that's it, and good night.
Thank you, Mayor. So really quick, just a happy Thanksgiving to all and, and happy holidays. How quickly the seasons have changed. I think trees were already put up before the turkeys were out, but it's, it's, it's that type of, that time of season, so very festive, looking forward to that. Operation Gobble was, was a success. I hope to continue in those efforts. There was a lot of participation and organizations and groups and those that supported Operation Gobble. This is the fifteenth annual. I might change it up. I, I know that there's folks that are turked out and want either a chicken or a ham, so just things to consider, right? I'm listening to you, but thank you for that. I want to also make mention that working to do our toy giveaway here at City Hall, that's something that I look forward to again this year. I'm going to be contributing from my account that I am given a stipend for. You're all welcome to participate, if, if you would. Again, we're going to just have refreshments and cookies, some, some toys. If you were here last year, you saw how, how many people attended. The kids were excited. We had a photo opportunity, and so look forward to doing that, and I'll be reaching out to those for assistance and sponsorship. What else? I want to congratulate all of those that ran for office, and most importantly, those that were successful and are now elected. Councilmember Montero.
I hope so.
Oh, come on. I, I think we're done. I think the county recorders-
I hope so.
Done counting. Councilmember Montero, Councilmember-elect Katrina Manning, and then we got our elected officials, I should say, how do they say it? Council-elect, and then there's city clerk-elect and city treasurer-elect. So kudos to all of you. I know you worked hard. It's not easy running for office, but I know that you worked hard, and that's why you're here today. Thank you to Diana in our city clerk's office. I know Diana, it's, it's, it's one of those challenging seasons, however, thank you for all your work that you've been doing in the city clerk's office and continue to do here, especially supporting the council and keeping us on check. So thank you. I want to just make a real quick recommendation, if I would, to the city, city manager and city attorney. There's still a lot of questions that are being posed through our cannabis website, especially with regards to areas in which licensing will be considered, and that includes either the industrial or manufacturing cities, areas in our cities. That would be like, I guess, further out in areas that are not visible, if you will. So can we maybe discuss that in our next meeting? Additional questions that I think we need to get clarified from some of these questions that are being asked over and over and over again?
So the Planning Commission just approved a Zontex amendment. It will come to city council, so this will be an ordinance that will amend several sections of the, of the ordinance, and that will clarify the zoning and where these places will exist.
Okay. And then there's also some additional questions with regards to the application process and the screening of those applications with regards to already having locations, or maybe those, you know, I guess, the qualifications of, of who would qualify better or not.
So that was all in the ordinance that was already approved by the city council-
Okay.
-in terms of the application process and the committee that will actually do the pointing, point system for that. So that's already laid out in the ordinance, so the firms or, or companies that are really seriously interested in this program, they should have already reviewed the ordinance, and they know what will be sought in the application.
Yeah, I think it's just very important that our website is up to date and every information is provided there for them, and just keep shooting over those emails that are coming for them to just, you know, go back to our website, read that over, because it's beginning to be like, you know, I know they're contacting the city clerk's office, I know they feel like as if they have, you know, a one-on-one exchange happening, you know, and I just wanted to assure that everybody's going through the same process to get the same information, and the information is available so that it doesn't, it doesn't have to be redundant, in which it has been. And so I'm just want to assure that we're on that and working hard to, to assure a good process. Other than that, thank you to, to individuals and folks here, our city staff, for, in the departments that are here today. We see you. Thank you for your work and your efforts. Are we going to be doing a, one city council meeting in December? I think that's the thirteenth?
December thirteenth.
Okay, and that's the swearing in?
That's the swearing in, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Are we going to have any refreshments or anything on that day?
That would be nice.
Just a small break like we used to do?
After we conduct that meeting.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to zoom through my comments. I want to first thank the city staff for all your hard work. It's a lot of work, right? It doesn't stop. And so I definitely appreciate everything that you guys do. I know there's always some directives or desires or initiatives that, that, that are brought up from different sources, and you guys, you know, figure it out. So I definitely appreciate that. Obviously, I want to thank the city manager and the city attorney for your hard work. You guys get most of my calls. And so some of those are fun, some of those are not. But I appreciate your commitment to the community. And I want to thank the community for participating in your government process, right? Everybody that voted in our last election, I want to thank you for, for your vote. Or, you know, for participating in the process and casting your vote. So far, it looks like we had about twelve thousand residents that voted in this last election. I would love to find a way to increase that, that participation in the future. I think the way that our city can be successful is having the input from, from everybody. And with that, I want to appreciate everybody that comes out to our council meetings and make your voices heard on the process. It's supposed to be a collection of a lot of different points of views and, and interests. And it's the job of the council to kind of weigh those different points of views and those interests and, and make a vote that, that they think it's in the best interest of the community. And, you know, we can't make those votes without input. So definitely appreciate everybody for coming out to the city council meetings, some very religiously and staying informed about what's going on. And so definitely want to continue to encourage that participation. I want to congratulate, although the, the votes have not been certified from this past election yet. There's still, I'm sure, a couple, maybe as much as two more updates. But I still want to congratulate those that have won this election. I have a lot of respect for everybody that chooses to run for office. You know, it's definitely a great deal of commitment that somebody decides to make by putting their, their, their name out there and their money on the line, their time on the line and, and deal with a lot of rejection, a lot of criticism and, and support as well. And it, it's tough. And so for those of you guys who won, I, I congratulate you. I'm excited for you and look forward to seeing your contribution to the community. And I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. And I know as we embark on Christmas, I hope everybody has a great Christmas. And let's take an opportunity to appreciate each other, right, in these times. So one thing I, I really appreciate about Hawthorne is the spirit of community service. We have a lot of people, whether they're elected or not elected, that faithfully contribute their time and their efforts to making the city better. I definitely want to let you know that. I want to thank you for that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for everyone who's here. I also want to congratulate all the participants in this last election, all the candidates for putting themselves out there. Time, money, effort, stress, a lot of drama out there sometimes. So, you know, it takes a lot to put yourself out there. I've been through it myself a few times, so I kind of understand how it is. Sometimes you win, sometimes you lose. I've lost too. So I've experienced both sides of the coin. So obviously, I want to congratulate our new, our new councilwoman-elect that's gonna be coming on board, Katrina Manning. Congratulations to you also, Councilmember Montero, for your apparent reelection. It's headed that way. And also for Ms. Dani Williams, our city clerk-elect, Marie Poindexter Hornbach, our upcoming, the city treasurer is gonna be joining us. So like I said, welcome to the team. So I'd like to welcome you to the team. And you guys get a little bit of hints as to what you have to face up here, once you're up here. So right now, everything's nice out there. Everybody's all shaking hands, oh, smiling, smiling. But when you're up here, like, what do they say? Like, once you get elected and once you're up here? Once, you have half the city against you or something like that, right?
No, they say the honeymoon's over.
The honeymoon's over or all of a sudden you gain enemies you didn't really, you, you, I mean, it's just, you know, it's just a, it's just a form of expression, but you don't get, you don't really have enemies. But you're, you're held accountable. There's, you're doing this for the city to promote our city and to move it forward, to be active participants. The community's watching. We have an electorate that's more involved. Apathy is out the window. People start to make their voices heard, so I really appreciate that. So with, with regards to that, I just want to make sure that the residents out here who are, I mean, today we had the cannabis issue that came up. And I know there's people out there that have opposition to the whole concept and some there are supporters, some there in the middle. But hey, I'm really not a fan of the idea of cannabis. And I, I think it's apparent. I mean, I think I've made my opinion known about it. I don't think that we need it to be able to economically take us into the future. I think we have so many other beautiful resources that make our city strong financially. We've been increasing our reserves fifteen hundred percent without cannabis on its own and through a pandemic. Okay, so I don't buy that argument. I don't buy that argument by anybody out there or anybody on this council. I do not. We have too many things that are working for us in our favor. And I do agree with the comments that were made by members of the community. The, the measure, the statewide measure did allow for cannabis to pass. Yes, it does. But that doesn't necessarily transpose into what the city of Hawthorne's electorate's opinion is on cannabis. Okay, so that's a false contention that people up here have made that argue that since sixty percent of the people out there, that that's gonna translate to sixty percent of the Hawthorne electorate. That's not true. Most appropriate thing would have been to take it out to a vote to see exactly what would have happened. Okay? Then I've also heard the arguments up here with regards to the cannabis tax measure. It was promoted as if cannabis were ever approved in the city of Hawthorne, a five percent tax measure, tax would be imposed. But then we have members of the council up here that are arguing, saying that that is proof that the residents of Hawthorne want it. That's false. The Hawthorne residents are not stupid. They read it very carefully and they know what they were voting for. So we can't make that contention. But since the momentum on the council, you guys make up your minds. I don't want to point any of my council member colleagues out. That's not what this whole point of this, what I'm saying is, the momentum is headed in a direction where it would get approved whether I say no, fight, or have one or two or a hundred people out there. The momentum is such that cannabis would be approved by the council's vote. So since I, the power that I have is to be able to control how cannabis gets implemented. The cannabis industry gets, it's, gets implemented within the city of Hawthorne. How many stores, what kind of cannabis-related services? How safe these things are gonna be, how far away from churches, children's parks, schools? So that's where I am able to make a difference and control it. And I think I can agree that all my council colleagues have, have worked to make this a very solid plan compared to a lot of other cities that are probably gonna face problems because they haven't thought about it as well as we have. And with the services of a consulting agency. And admittedly, all my council colleagues doing everything above board. We're gonna have something that is going to work for Hawthorne. I also want to just make sure that the residents know that you need to be on top of things. You can't all of a sudden, after, months and months after something's already been decided, all of a sudden have an op, strong opposition to something. It happens over and over and over and over. I got, we have people opposed to the apartment buildings on Rose Grants and on Crenshaw. After everything's been decided, all of a sudden you get like five or six people coming up and saying, no, 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 you know? I opposed it, but I didn't have any of the residents up here opposing it with me. Cannabis, we saw like a handful of people. Two hundred signatures is not forty thousand residents. Okay? Two hundred signatures does not represent forty thousand residents that have an opinion on the matter. So I can see everybody's viewpoint and I can see the viewpoint of those people for, against, or in the middle. But you, if you want to compare us to the cities in the, in the other parts of South Bay, they're on it. They're making noise. They're always at their meetings. Okay? If you have something to say, you need to be bringing, you have, you can't be a delegate for people that are opposed to somebody, something and say that you got a hundred people that are opposed if you're only one person up here. Okay? I think we need to get more involved and we need to, if you're gonna be an activist here and if you're gonna oppose things, support or oppose stuff, you need to just bring people and numbers to oppose stuff. You can't just do it like after the fact, after everything's been established, you know? We, we all care for Hawthorne. We have different perspectives on the council. But we, we do know that we want to keep Hawthorne safe. The commonalities are more than the differences by a lot, right? But we all want to keep Hawthorne safe for the families, children, seniors, and everybody that lives here. And we want to have Hawthorne be prosperous. So I think that that's going to continue to happen, okay? And if you really don't like what's happening, don't keep reelecting the people on here, myself or anybody on this council that keeps making, making the decisions that you are opposed to. That's all it comes down to, right? That's really what it comes down to, guys. So, so look, we have our next meeting. I'm going to ask our city manager, the appointment of commissions, we need to move that to, to January. We need to move that to January out of courtesy to our new incoming councilwoman-elect so she can get acclimated to her seat and be able to start studying the, the commissions that she may be interested in. I'm pretty sure there's gonna be plenty of assignments that we can give to those council members who are most available to attend, okay? I'm not available to attend certain things, but others are able to. And then we need to see what our new colleague is going to say. Plus, none of the commissions are gonna be meeting over the winter break. So I think that'll give us enough time to do it like we've traditionally been doing in the first meeting in January. Is that okay? Okay. But please start expressing your interest. And I'm pretty sure everybody's gonna get what they're gonna want anyways, okay? Do we have anything else, guys? Absolutely. Yes. Didn't, you didn't, didn't you mention that? Was that what you were gonna mention?
Can you talk about the tiny home?
Absolutely. It's a great day in Hawthorne tomorrow. We're making a shift and change as being very proactive. Oh, can you hear me? Yeah, sorry. Being very proactive. Tomorrow will be the groundbreaking of our tiny home bridge housing project. We intend on building thirteen tiny homes on a city-owned property in an industrial area of Hawthorne. Our goal with this project is to get those that want to be helped housed, transitioned. There's a lot of misconceptions on what type of project this is. And I would beg the community and residents in other cities to pay attention to what we're doing. We are the leaders with the leadership that we have here. We plan to have a certifier in place, security twenty-four hours a day, and one hundred eighty days to, a little over two hundred days to get individuals permanently housed. This is a, a great project. Some of the other cities in the South Bay have taken the lead on it and we're following their lead, because we are making changes in the community. So ten o'clock tomorrow, ten AM, Office Sims and one thirty first. Hopefully, all can attend. We'll have renderings of the project there and we'll break ground. So hopefully, we can see the community there and see, you know, city staff and elected officials there tomorrow morning at ten AM. Thank you.
So I'll send my congratulations. So I have my day job that I can't get, uh, take off from. We don't have any substitute teachers that could cover my class.
Slight go back?
Yeah, so go ahead.
Right, go back.
Yeah, slight.
Will you please, the letter that's going to be sent to the Board of Supervisors, would you also send a copy of that to the COG and to the League of California Cities?
Which item is that, Councilwoman Valentine? Is that the, could you hit two items?
That was the discussion action item on the land bank program.
Note it.
Thank you.
Good. All right. If there's nothing, thank you, Councilwoman Valentine, for, for your service. We really appreciate everything you've done for the, for the city. You've dedicated yourself many years on the council and the, the fruits of your labor are very apparent.
Thank you.
Bay Delta course.
Pardon me? Planted what?
Planted behind the thirteen, correct? Yeah, thank you. So we'll do more, more congratulation and to new outcome and the goodbyes. Thank you.
All right. If there's nothing further from council, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-four.